Good evening, North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to our city council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance. At the podium, please give the card to the city clerk. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Now, you'll notice tonight when you came in and outside there, we put some notices there. We are complying with NRS, and so in the first public hearing, if you have anything that you want to talk to about any of the items, and you're going to be leaving, this is the time to talk. The fact is, because when we get to those items, we're just going to work through the situation. We're going to take your information now, write it down, then when we get to that item, we'll have had your information, is how the city clerk has advised us. And then at the end, we will have a second public hearing where you can talk about anything you want. So I just wanted to make that announcement to you here today. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Mayor, yes, we are.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have the invocation given by Pastor Tom Knudsen of Grace Point Church, and we have the blessing to have the Pledge of Allegiance by his son, Isaiah Knudsen. Please come forward. Please stand.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with thanksgiving. We thank you for the breadth of life that you have given us. We thank you for your grace and power. Lord, we thank you for your love, love that you have given us without any discrimination. God, we are thankful for the great leaders you have given us, from national leaders to our local leaders here with us. Lord, grant them the wisdom to help our community and to help those in our community that feel helpless. God, I pray for peace and protection for the members of this council. I pray for them to have clarity and patience, that they will have the hunger to act with justity, justice, equality, and peace. Lord, you have blessed us with such a great city. Help us to use our passions to help grow and love the city of North Las Vegas. Help us to see ourselves responsible to those without a voice, family, and hope. Heavenly Father, bless our time together tonight. Help us use this time for the betterment of our community, that the work done here tonight might bring you the honor and glory you deserve. Lord, it is in the glorious name of Jesus Christ we pray tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. And Isaiah, nice to have you here with us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for being here with your father. Tonight, we have the pleasure of awarding the Business of the Month certificate, and it's to a wonderful restaurant in North Las Vegas, Ella M.'s Soul Food on Craig Road. Ms. Goyens-Brown will make the presentation. Counsel, let's go down for the presentation.
If you like food, like we all do, hopefully you have eaten at Ella M.'s Soul Food Restaurant that is located on Craig Road. During our briefing yesterday, we kind of compared what's the best in the restaurant, aside from all the delicious food choices that are available. Ryan and I kind of agreed that the red Kool-Aid is about the best you can find anyplace in the United States of America. So if you just go there for the red Kool-Aid, that's saying something. So, Anisha, would you come on down, please? So on behalf of the city of North Las Vegas, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to Ella M.'s Soul Food for your valuable service to our community since 2009, and so we wish you many more years of continued success and extra pounds because you just can't help it because the food's so good.
Thank you so much. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Well, we are so very honored to be here and recognized in the Las Vegas community for this award. I started at Ella M.'s as a server, and now I'm the operational manager of the whole establishment. We tend to hire a lot of people who may not have experience but have the work ethic and dedication and hard work to get everything done and to be a valuable asset to our team. So we try very hard to be open to the public and any type of community service that may -- that there may be. So we really appreciate this. We hope that we can -- well, some type -- we hope that we can continue to have you guys support. This is basically the way that we get our advertisement and things like that, is through you guys word of mouth. We wouldn't be in business this long for nine years if it wasn't through these wonderful people just constantly putting out us in their word -- in through word of mouth. So we thank you and we appreciate it. We're so honored for this award.
I might add that I eat there quite regularly, and it's not your traditional soul food, it's southern food, southern soul food, you know? My folks are in Pensacola, Florida, so I love that chicken fried steak that you cut up and put the gravy on. I love the okra and the black eyed peas and all the other different kind of stuff that you have there. It's a wonderful restaurant. I think we're the only city in this area that has such a wonderful soul food restaurant. So I want to thank you for putting it in North Las Vegas.
And I've got to say, the one time I went with the mayor to go and eat there, it was
Councilman Barone.
Thank you, Mayor.
closed.
I definitely have to hit up Emma's -- just actually, I have quite a few things here.
But, I guess it wasn't on Monday, it was closing on Monday. Yeah, yeah. So I'm going to make a special trip, maybe even this weekend, to swing by, and then I
Number one, this Friday, I'm part of the team that's going to be hosting the Apostolic
can come back and add my poundage -- I mean, add my praise to your outfit there.
Art Reception honoring a very talented and very well-known local artist, Mr. Roberto Rico,
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, and now I'm hungry.
who was a teacher for our senior program here at the Bruce Recreation Center.
I find that hard to believe, Councilman, after all that we ate a while ago. I know where you are, okay?
And that'll be this Friday, March 9th, right outside at the -- in the art gallery, the
I know where your establishment is, rather. So I plan on visiting over there because I love that kind of food.
Stone Soup Art Gallery, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
So thank you so much for being over here in North Las Vegas with us.
And of course, you're all invited to come by.
We appreciate it.
And I just remembered that I have to get food for that, and I'll have to work on that, I think, first thing tomorrow. Also, as one of our noted de facto scholars for North Las Vegas and historians pointed out, we have lots of great things happening here in North Las Vegas, including a Ross Dress for Less, which, you know, maybe in others -- in other communities, it's not a big deal, but for us, it is a big deal to have Ross Dress for Less. They're going to be having their grand opening this Saturday, March 10th, at 8:30, just right around the corner over here at the Fiesta Plaza, where La Bonita was, and where they're going to be in the same spot, but they're opening up a Ross Dress for Less there. And also, I want to, again, I'm not going to say that Jeff actually stole our thunder on this one, but if anyone gets a chance, please see him. He's got a wonderful story back there. Our friend, the Las Vegas Sun, took some time to go on a tour with myself and Dellen, our PIO, and we took a little tour of the area, pointed out lots of great things that are happening here in the downtown area. I think that, as we say over at Rancho High School, we once had this slogan, "The best is yet to come." Mayor, the best is yet to come.
I agree. Mayor Protem, Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty much hit a doubleheader this past couple of weeks. Cut me off, cut myself off. Had an opportunity to speak at Somerset Academy on Centennial and Commerce. They have an amazing operation over there. I didn't realize. I've been there before, but this is the first time that I took a tour of that building. I remember when that school was approved and my ward there. And I have to tell you that the children there, the teachers, are very, very clearly dedicated to serving not only the students but the community as well. I'm always amazed at the attentiveness of the students, no matter what age group, whether they be first grade, kindergarten. They're so knowledgeable and so many light years ahead of where I was, and sometimes I think where I am right now. I also had an opportunity to speak at Career Day at Kalen Elementary School. And we did have a couple of speakers that couldn't make it, so they put me in the lunchroom, and I was kind of the fallback person, that whoever didn't have a speaker to their class, they came into the lunchroom. So I had some pretty big crowds in there, and once again, we had our police, fire, FBI, and different organizations, and they came in there with little tags on their shirts and their vests, saying what they would like to be when they grow up. So again, it's, you know, we get to go to a lot of events, but being able to have the time to speak to the future generation, I feel very, very confident that we're all in good hands. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Goyens-Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So can I go, "Woo-hoo," because we are in the heart of tax season? Yay! So just so you know, the Alexander Library has free tax preparation every Saturday in the month of March, and that's at 1755 West Alexander, and it's from 9:30 to 12:30. There are some income requirements, so if you, you know, if your household was less than $57,000 in 2007, you can get this tax preparation done for free, and it does require an appointment. So you can just call the Alexander Library if that's something that you would like to participate in. Also, at our fabulous AMP at the Craig Ranch Regional Park next Wednesday, on the 14th, there will be the Sea Chanters in concert. It's their national tour. The concert starts at 7:30. It's free and open to the public. And this is America's Navy Band. It's one of 12 -- this is one of 12 cities that are going to host the Sea Chanters on their national tour, and it's a traditional choral music. They sing sea chantees, patriotic song, as well as opera, Broadway hits, and contemporary music. So it should be a pretty, pretty nice evening. So if you're available, please join us there on March 14th. Also today, Mayor Protem, Mayor Lee, Scott, and myself participated in the 19th Annual Elizondo Honor Day. Raul P. Elizondo Elementary School was named after one of our fallen officers here in North Las Vegas, and they have such a great festival or honor day where officers and all of our military and first responders and our police officers, fire, visit the classrooms, talk with the kids, have lunch with the kids, and then they have a formal program in the afternoon where they have guest speakers come in, and then they have a K-9 demonstration, and it all culminates with a nice parade, and the kids really enjoy and learn a lot about not only Raul P. Elizondo, his family, and what our people who keep us safe on a daily basis do.
Thank you. Very good report. Councilman Black.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege on March 1st, last Thursday, to attend the firefighter graduation at CSN. We have 12 -- I'm sorry, 11 new firefighters in our North Las Vegas family. It was an amazing, amazing event and a great tribute to the hard work that those 11 men put in over the last 20 weeks to be certified as firefighters, and it was an awesome opportunity to be there. Also, I'd like to say thank you to a group of about 35 people on this last Saturday with me at Goyens Park on Washburn. We did a thorough park cleanup. We picked up lots of trash and debris, and we spread out 10 tons of sand in the volleyball courts. I'll be doing a Ward 3 park cleanup every two months during the rest of the year. The next one will be in May at the Willie McCool Airplane Park in the far north end of Ward 3, and so stay tuned for details on that. I'd love to have more individuals come out and help with that. And then lastly, last week was Nevada Reading Week, and I had the privilege of visiting five different elementary schools in Ward 3. I had the chance to read to 13 different classes from kindergarten to fifth grade, and they -- the schools have a difficulty getting guest readers because it's during the day, so please keep in mind, next year, if you'd like to participate there, we'll never turn a guest reader away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great reports, great things happening in your districts. Now, we're moving on to the public forum. Now, this is a time set aside for public forum on any posted agenda items. We are now complying, the clerk's been going through, we are complying with the NRS 241.020. If you want to speak on any items excluding public hearings and ordinance for introduction only, this is your time to speak. So at this point in time, we have a few people who would like to speak on item number nine, and we have somebody in the first public forum. Mr. Schof, would you like to come up, please?
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. My name is Steve Schof. I live at 5622 Midnight Bridge Street, North Las Vegas. I want to thank the council and the city for -- I'd like to thank the council and the city for this new ordinance that you're introducing tonight, 2874. I've spoken about it several times. I want to thank Mark Jordan and the Southern Nevada Home Builders Association for doing something for the city of North Las Vegas, which I think we deserve, and I just wanted to thank everybody, and thank everybody, and thank everybody.
Thank you for your diligence, sir. Ms. Lisa Cole, first public forum, item number nine. Keith, you'll follow her if you'd like to just be prepared.
Good evening. Lisa Cole, 9910 West Cheyenne Avenue. I'm here on behalf of several landowners in the Apex Industrial Park area, and I just have to say, this is my first time speaking in this forum, so if I get nervous, I apologize. I've been working on the Apex project for going on 18 years now, so to say that I'm very, very appreciative of what you're doing out there is an understatement. So I'm here to express that gratitude and to let you know that the water tank that you're considering tonight, an item nine, is really important to us. It's a first step in opening up a large chunk of industrial land at Apex, and it means a lot. It means a lot to Apex, it means a lot to the city of North Las Vegas, and to Southern Nevada as a whole. So we appreciate that. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you on a regular basis to help make some of these things really happen. Again, we love you guys, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Keith, please go up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Keith Osterling, and I'm at 4129 West Cheyenne Avenue. I'm here tonight to also speak about agenda item number nine on behalf of Weston Adams. He, over the past few years, he's actually invested significantly in the Apex area, over 1,000 acres of developable land, and we're just really excited to get this project going and with your guys' vision and help with this tank, it's going to be just the first step in getting the infrastructure in place and everything that will follow, including the water line. And yeah, I just really wanted to come up here and thank you guys and show gratitude for your vision, and yeah, I appreciate you guys.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
It's a great partnership we have with your company. Mr. James Mitchell Tree? Am I saying this wrong, James? I'm so sorry, sir.
My whole life, I've been called Michael Tree. I represent Virgin Hyperloop 1. We certainly appreciate the city of North Las Vegas, as well as the City of North Las Vegas Fire Department. They've supported us on many of our events out there in the construction of Deadloop and the tube system that we're using. We definitely need this utility tank, as you know, as we have a lot of dust control issues that we're dealing with and fire suppression. So it's very important for us as a whole, for the company, as we move forward to continue our efforts out there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your wonderful company. So just so you understand, NRS 241 -- oh, here we go, 1.020. This would be the time up to speak on posted agenda items excluding public hearing items and ordinances for introduction only. So if you want to speak to the city council before the second public forum, this is the time to come forward on any of those items.
So Mayor, you have one there that was requested for item four, but really should be item eight, I guess.
Mr. Richard, item number eight.
Is item eight going to be heard tonight?
That'll be an announcement.
Well, I mean, I prefer to talk about the item that wants to be heard. Is it going to be heard?
Actually, we're complying with the NRS. We've been -- the clerk's been going through the system and cleaning up a lot of stuff, so this would be the time on item number eight to go ahead and discuss that item.
Well, okay, let's talk about it. I've given -- you know, I've had some time to give this some thought. I've also had time for discovery, and I've contacted the city clerk's office more than once to try and get a look at these emails, which I have not seen these emails yet, and my feelings about emails are, I'm sick of hearing about them. I mean, I know enough about computers to know that we can -- any computer can be hacked, any set of emails could be forged. What I do have to live with is some hard fact, and that is that Dr. Lou's been with the city for 13 years. She's done a really outstanding job as a city engineer and then as a fill-in city manager. When I was running for mayor last year at this time, you know, one of the big things I was on my agenda was to hire a really strong city manager. In the interim, I found out that she was doing something I did not know about, and that was she stood up the Teamsters, stood up to the police union, stood up to the fire union, and that's what got her in trouble. I had been told from reliable sources that the unions told you that they would not support you unless you got rid of her, and I think this thing, when he -- when she fired her assistant city manager, Ryan Juden, that was the breaking point for you, and it was a great time to get her off your backs because you wanted her gone. So these are all facts. These are things I know, and the fact that the unions were down here, the Teamster, Larry Griffith, the guy from the Teamsters, was yelling and screaming, you remember that? And saying, "Listen, we don't need to look for a new city manager, got one right here, pay Ryan Juden $300,000 a year because he says yes to everything we want." Now, the fact that they hate this woman and they love Ryan tells me that I have to support Dr. Lou because she was doing the right thing for the taxpayer. These are things I know, and I believe this is a witch hunt, and I know enough about what's going on in the city to substantiate that, and I think is a mistake to do what you people have been doing to her. I hope that some of you can actually develop the courage to vote against this agenda to get rid of her and to cheat her out of her severance package.
Thank you, Mr. Richard.
You're welcome.
Anybody else would like to come up and speak to the council? This would be your time on posted agenda items. Seeing that, we will close the public forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Item one, approve city council regular meeting agenda of March 7, 2018 for possible action.
Mayor and council, there are two changes to tonight's agenda. The demand for item four has withdrawn. The request, and staff recommends, that the agenda be amended to move the consent agenda to be heard immediately before set future public hearing dates and after approval of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Moving on to set future public hearing dates. Moving on to public hearings.
Okay. Item three, approve back 0118 Navarro vacation for applicant Rosalia M. Navarro to vacate a portion of the public right of way in an R1 single-family low-density district located south of Topaz Hills Drive, approximately 110 feet east of Asia Road, APN 1390761008.
Thank you. Anyone coming forth on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, the chair will take a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number three.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item four was withdrawn.
Item four was withdrawn. Moving on to business.
Mayor, that's one that you read.
Pardon me?
That's one that you read because it's --
Oh, yes, that's right. Pass and adopt Resolution Number 2603 pursuant to Article 3, Section 3.030 of the North Las Vegas City Charter, removing city manager Chong Liu from office and terminating the employment agreement of the city manager, Chong Liu. I have seen no Ms. Liu here today. Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to say that based on the information that was provided to us by independent counsel, that of Chong Liu's intentional breach of employment agreement, I'd like to make a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2603.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to set future public hearing dates. Moving on to public hearings.
Okay. Item three, approve back 0118 Navarro vacation for applicant Rosalia M. Navarro to vacate a portion of the public right of way in an R1 single-family low-density district located south of Topaz Hills Drive, approximately 110 feet east of Asia Road, APN 1390761008.
Thank you. Anyone coming forth on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, the chair will take a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number three.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item four was withdrawn.
Item four was withdrawn. Moving on to business.
Mayor, that's one that you read.
Pardon me?
That's one that you read because it's --
Oh, yes, that's right. Pass and adopt Resolution Number 2603 pursuant to Article 3, Section 3.030 of the North Las Vegas City Charter, removing city manager Chong Liu from office and terminating the employment agreement of the city manager, Chong Liu. I have seen no Ms. Liu here today. Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to say that based on the information that was provided to us by independent counsel, that of Chong Liu's intentional breach of employment agreement, I'd like to make a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2603.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item nine, approve professional engineering service agreement with Pogemeyer Design Group, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $395,160 funded by the Utility Enterprise Fund to provide professional engineering services for the Apex Water Storage Project.
Thank you. Mr. DeBolle.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. For the record, Randy DeBolle, Utilities Director, and also just also for the record, Larry Carroll, who's the project principal, and Daisy Vidal, who is the project manager on this recommended contract with Pogemeyer, is here in the audience if you would have any questions. I do want to talk briefly -- am I missing a page here? All right. There we go. There we go. Sorry. The Apex Water Storage Project is a project where we're proposing to construct, design, and construct a 750,000-gallon elevated storage tank and connect it to our Playa Solar Well. If you look at the map of Apex there, this project will serve all of the areas in yellow in the upper left-hand corner, as well as the blue areas. It's approximately 400 acres, could serve more if, depending on the water demand. There's a map showing the location of it, which is in the extreme northwest corner, and it will connect to our Playa Well. The line on Route 93 will have to be designed. The red line on Apex Power Parkway is already designed and will simply be incorporated into the plans and specifications for bidding. Now, I just want to go through briefly, showing you what to expect as to the types of water tanks that could potentially be constructed out there. The first one is a spiroid elevated tank. This tank is common -- This tank is common. This is my strong point, by the way, because I'm from the Midwest where we have lots of these. We don't have too many here in the valley. But this is a spiroid elevated tank. You'll note that the, you could have printing on it, you can have the city of North Las Vegas, whatever verbiage you really want to put on these tanks, you'll be able to do. This is a multi-column elevated tank. There's actually two of these that I know of here in the valley. One is at the National Guard Armory, and the other is at Nellis Air Force Base. It's just a simple tank with, with columns on it that holds the water up in the air. Now, keep in mind, this tank will be about 105 to 150 feet tall, to the, from the bottom of the bowl to the top. The third type is a fluted column elevated storage tank. The advantages of this kind of tank is that there's actually storage underneath it. You can see the door there. We could store equipment and whatnot underneath there and, which we will probably need up in the Apex area. And finally, I just want to mention that the reason we're hiring an engineering firm like Pogemeyer is to make sure we get what we want and not what the contractor wants. This is a wooden elevated storage tank. It's probably 100 years old, and no, we're not going to be approving one like that. Any questions?
Could you go back to the first one? Okay. This is kind of fun for us here. How many people in the audience like this one? I'm just looking for hands. There's six, seven. All right.
It's actually a simpler one to maintain, by the way.
But I will note that the engineer raised his hand, so it's probably the most expensive.
And the next one? How about that? Anybody in the audience like that one? Oh, that didn't get any, Randy.
Mayor, that thing looks like something from that movie War of the Worlds, you know, the walker things?
The engineer also tells me this is one of the most expensive to maintain.
Well, that's the Billy Bob Loves Charlene on John Deere Green. You know, the song, you know, that's what they have back east there a lot. Okay, the next one?
I'll hear that one.
Oh, there's one, too.
Mayor, I might point out, if you look at the verbiage on that, it says Prologis, one of our big customers in the, in North Las Vegas.
All right, and then the last one?
My.
Oh, look at all those hands. Well, I don't know how you're going to make the decision. Is Larry going to come back and give pricing and stuff like that? Is that how you expect it?
Mayor, in his pre-design report, he will come back with different types of recommendations and costs. We do have $4 million budgeted for this project. We do intend to stay within our budget. We expect to get paid back through connection fees and potential SID fees, whatever it will take. We estimate the completion, well, the engineering to be completed within six months, and the design bid build process will take another year. So we're actually telling people that this tank will be in service in 18 months.
Well, great. Counsel, any comments or questions on that?
I have a question. The third option had an antenna on the left-hand side. Is there a dual-purpose component? Could we put a cell, you know, at least space for cellular tower for offset the cost?
I don't see why not, because the antennas that, like a cellphone tower or something, is metal anyhow. So I doubt if the metal would impact that. The engineer is shaking his head, saying, "Okay," so.
Great. Well, thank you.
Mayor and council, I'd just like to point out that this is the first of several items that we'll be bringing before the council over the next couple of months. We are excited about this. There's been lots of conversation about Apex over, over, well, the past decade and a half, quite frankly. And with these projects, with, with the beginning of the design on this, and with some of these projects that we're doing both in the north and the south, as we presented this to you all at the last meeting, it's probably going underneath the radar, given all the things that are, that are going on, that are going on that seem to be grabbing the headlines. But without a doubt, these projects are some of the most significant projects for North Las Vegas. They're opening up hundreds of acres, in some instances, thousands of acres, that is converting this, this land into real estate. And we've been meeting and talking with a number of different companies that are very excited about this land opening up, and we're expecting to have these votes that are being taken for these items in the, in the future. You'll start to see some other developments that'll be coming that we're very excited about.
Thank you. Very good. Well, Randy, I don't see any other questions. I think the chair will call for motion to approve the engineering agreement, if that's okay.
Mayor, I just want to say, as a person who studies history, the history of the West is dictated with infrastructure, by infrastructure, particularly water infrastructure. The ACM couldn't have said it any better. And quite frankly, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. And that will be going in Ward One, is that correct?
That's correct.
Moving on.
Item 10, approve interlogo agreement with Clark County, Nevada, providing Home Investment Partnerships Act program funds in the amount of $757,77 for FY 2017-18 participation in the home consortium.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 10 before, actually, I should have made my comment first. This is wonderful use of funds to help affordable housing right here in North Las Vegas. We have, I believe, six applications for these funds that will help with rehabilitation of homes, rent assistance, and new housing projects for affordable, low-income homes. So I move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 11, approve First Amendment to the citywide facility light-emitting diode LED retrofit replacement and installation agreement with Echo Green in a total amount not to exceed $76,236 per fiscal year with no renewal options.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions? If not, the chair will take a motion?
It's a good thing when the city is moving to become greener, and would I like to make a motion to approve, Mayor?
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 12, approve Professional Landscape Architectural Services Agreement with Design Vision, Inc., doing business as Southwick Landscape Architects, in an amount not to exceed $230,000 from the Tax Override Fund. Parks for the Craig Ranch Regional Park Perimeter Road, parking lot rehabilitation, CIP project number 10481.
Wonderful. Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 12.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 13, award bid number 1524 and approve a citywide roadway patching service agreement with Galt Development LLC in a total amount not to exceed $1,030,000, $30,000 for the first fiscal year, and $250,000 annually every year thereafter for a three-year period, with an option to renew for one additional year to provide roadway patches at various locations throughout the city.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 14, award bid number 1532 and approve construction contract with Meadow Valley Contractors, Inc., DBA, ACC Southwest, in total amount of $2,190,327, $1,109,839 funded by the Utility Enterprise Fund, and $1,080,488 funded by Special Improvement District Number 65 for the Northeast Interceptor Phase III Project, CIP project number S003.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to point out that Meadow Valley, of course, besides being a very responsible builder, they're one of our North Las Vegas-based companies. As I understand, they have a fantastic reputation for getting things done on time and on a budget. And I'm a blessed man to be the fellow on which all these projects are going into. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Ordnances listed under final action were introduced to the previous council meeting for action at this meeting, but may include emergency ordinances. Item 15, pass and adopt ordinance number 2875, amending ordinance number 609 by replacing section 060 through 090 of chapter 04 of Title II of the municipal code to require introduction of a resolution, and any amendment to such resolution be read aloud to the council.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Mayor, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Thank you. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, introduction only.
There is no public comment for these items, and no action will be taken by the council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on any of these items, please attend the meeting where the final action will be determined and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item 16, introduce ordinance number 2867, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately 11.3 acres therein from a C-2 general commercial district to a PSP, public semi-public district, ZN 0118, Cristo Rey, St. Vater, excuse me, where property generally located north of Vandemere Street and approximately 170 feet west of North Las Vegas Boulevard, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 17, introduce ordinance number 2870, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 by reclassifying approximately 19.5 plus or minus acres therein from an MUD, Mixed Use Development District, to an M1 Business Park Industrial District, ZN 0418, Huntington Industrial, for property generally located at 70 West Craig Road, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 18, introduce ordinance number 2871, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 by reclassifying approximately 29.38 plus or minus acres therein from an R1, single-family, low-density district to a C2, general commercial district, ZN 0218, Pre-Craig Clayton LLC, where property generally located at the northwest corner of Craig Road in the Scott-Robinson Boulevard alignment, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 19, introduce ordinance number 2872, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of Title 17 by reclassifying approximately 48.13 plus or minus acres therein from an R1, single-family, low-density district to a C2, general commercial district, ZN 0318, Paris Robinson Eastern LLC, where property generally located north of Craig Road, approximately 900 feet east of Camina Al Norte, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 20, introduce ordinance number 2873, amending Title 17 relating to zoning, ZOA 0118, by amending Title 17 zoning ordinance to allow alternative open-space standards for single-family residential developments, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 21, introduce ordinance number 2874, amending Title 17 relating to zoning, ZOA 0218, by amending Title 17 zoning ordinance to allow the streamlining of entitlement applications and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 22, introduce ordinance number 2881, approving a development agreement between the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, Inside Park Highlands LLC and PH Consulting Services, LLC, for the development of land located at the northwest corner of Revere Street and Durrell Lane, and for the development of land located at the northwest corner of Revere Street and Clark County Route 215, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you very much. You've got a lot of things going on in a lot of your districts. Mr. Councilman Black, I haven't recognized anything in your district yet, but it's going to explode real quick. Moving on to city managers' report.
Mayor and council, just a, something else that kind of has gone under the radar is just February 15, Fitch Ratings was upgraded the city's credit rating, bond rating, from B-plus to BB for our long-term issuer default rating. This is something that's very significant. As council and many people in the listening audience are aware, one of the goals that we had was to change the city's bond rating. That is kind of a very independent measure of, it's, it's not really something that we can control, but in many ways reflects what we're, what this body has done and what staff has been doing. If you recall, in 2013, four years ago, the city was kind of in a downward spiral. Within 20 months, we were able to stop the bleeding, if you will, and have our first, basically where the, where bonding agencies reaffirmed the previous downgrade that they had done, which showed that it was kind of stopped, stabilized, was, was moving in a straight line. Subsequent to that, we've had a number of bond rating increases. We specifically came to this body a year ago and talked about our legislative priorities for the 17th session and the significance of moving the PIL transfer and getting a second pathway where we could, because of the impact that that 2021 deadline was having on our, on our credit rating at the time. At that time, we discussed how we believed that this would increase the city's credit rating. We believe that, and it was something that was affirmed by Fitch last month, that in fact, it has increased our credit rating two bumps up. The analyst specifically, in that report, the analyst said that it was due to the passage of SB 78. So we're, once again, thankful for the legislature and for the governor for working with the city on this priority piece of legislation. We still have a goal by this summer to be in investment grade. We're only two clicks away from investment grade. And what that means is there is some debt that we will be able to refinance and get at today's interest rates, which will, just in interest payments alone, could be a net increase of about $1 million that we're essentially just paying because of the, it's the city's previously poor credit rating. So we know that whenever we take, the 3rd of April, we're going back before the community of local government finance, where we will be presenting the final plan that was approved by council last month. And we believe that with the passage of that, that actually then will, once that plan is adopted, then the city of North Las Vegas moves out of the 2021 deadline and into the second pathway that was created by the passage of Senate Bill 78. We believe that that's something that's going to be very credit positive for us. We also have an in-person meeting of S&amp;P that's going to be here in two weeks, three weeks, to, to see Apex, to see some of the progress, to see what's happened with the Special Improvement District around the Speedway and how things are going on out there. We had that, that very large project was in the building this morning, meeting with multiple departments, making sure that we were able to meet their timelines. We're being told that that will be public within two or three weeks. So we're expecting that S&amp;P will, will see this and that they'll see the progress that we're making on this. At the same time, staff has been working very closely with our bargaining groups to get through our union negotiations at this time and move into a space where we have some agreements that have been ratified and passed by council that takes out some of the uncertainty with our labor agreements moving forward. And we believe with these, these three items and a few others, that we hope to be investment grade this summer, which was a goal that I don't think anybody would have been smart to have bet on four years ago, that we would be in this position. But it is, is truly the work of a lot of different people, and I myself want to thank this body for taking recommendations of staff whenever we've come and said, "Listen, if we will do these things, we believe that the, the financial whizzes in Wall Street will react to this way." And they have, and this is no small feat from Darren and Corey and their work in finance and the finance team, and the efforts that have been made by so many people. And so I just wanted to report that to you guys and to the city. Thank you.
Can I, I'd like to piggyback on your time here, just because Mr. DeValle and Ms. Gavin are here, directors. We've, we went to Washington and worked on the North Fifth Craig Road, the 240-acre parcels on both sides of the street. Recently, we were at Nellis Air Force Base meeting with some very high-up people that are interested in that. Randy's figuring out how to help improve their water rights and fix their wells, and Gina's working on ways to get the North Fifth easements and to get 39 of those 40 acres on both sides of the road into development. So huge things are happening. It just happened this morning that we're going to Level 3 now. We might, they might be coming up for San Antonio to see us on this. So, very good. Things are happening with your staff, too. I just want to let you, I don't know if you were aware of that happening today.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to public forum. Now is the time for the public to speak on issues not posed on the agenda. Remember, the council may not take action upon an item raised during the public forum. Adam, city clerk, do we have any blue cards? I have a couple here from Mayor Protem.
You have all the ones that we have received.
Mr. Johnson? John, is John in here or is he out? Mr. Johnson? Mr. John Johnson?
Sorry about that. John Johnson, 4265 Village Hills Street. I'm coming to talk today to talk about, oh, excuse me. First of all, I represent Empowerment Through Training and Education. It's a nonprofit here in North Las Vegas that helps low-income communities and help to be. to build a stronger economic system through helping the people who need it the most. Today, the reason why I'm talking here today is a couple of events. The first one that I want to talk about is April fourth. April fourth is the fiftieth anniversary of the assassination of Martin Luther King. It's a very, very important anniversary for the African-American community here in North Las Vegas as well as around Las Vegas. Eighty-eight-point-one is going to be hosting a candlelight visual right here in North Las Vegas at the MLK statue. That's going to be, I believe, about six o'clock. I'm going to bring you guys a lot of information on that. Being that it is in North Las Vegas, I hope that you guys will, you know, be involved in it. It actually is on you guys' council meeting, so, you know, even if you guys aren't in attendance, you know, maybe a proclamation, some letters, stuff like that in support. The other thing that I want to talk about is the Community Resource Fair. You guys remember last year around July, we did a Community Resource Fair with Councilman Barone. I've been talking to the Walmarts here in North Las Vegas about doing a series of Community Resource Fairs. And actually, I got one Walmart already donated for the Community Resource Fair. It's the one on Lake Mead and right across the street from the Texas. They've donated five hundred dollars. The local, the local community neighborhood Walmarts, they don't have a big budget, but they are going to donate gift cards and stuff like that for the events. They're very much interested. So what I wanted to do is I wanted each one of you guys to pick a location in your ward that you feel a Community Resource Fair will benefit your constituents. And then I want to work with you guys so we can develop a plan for the rest of the year to do these Community Resource Fair series. The last thing I want to talk about is our programs.
Mr. Johnson, could you explain the Community Resource Center just for a second?
Oh, so the Community Resource Fair.
Fair, I mean.
So basically, you hear about a job fair, right? You go to a job fair, you find out about where are the jobs at. Well, you know what? What if I need help paying my bills? What if I need help paying my energy assistance? Where do I go? Who do I talk to? So how about we start developing these resource fairs where we could bring Catholic charities, where we can bring Hope, Hope for Prisoners, where we could bring all these nonprofit service groups into the area where these low-income communities need it the most? And that's the point of the resource fair.
All right, thank you.
And then, real quick closing, the three programs that we're going to focus in on this year is our Ex-Felon Reentry Program, our Community Ambassador Program, and our Homeless Housing Program. So you guys will be hearing a lot more. I'll be working with our city manager, hopefully, to develop a lot of these programs. And also, one last thing, we also need to leverage off of these businesses that are coming in here and building these businesses to also donate and support our community efforts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate you. Mr. Burchard?
Last month was Black History Month, and I was kind of appalled by the fact that North Las Vegas doesn't seem to get involved in that particular holiday, and I felt like it would have been a great time to have displays in the hallway because we have the venue for that. We have those plastic containers and stuff where we usually display artwork and stuff. Would have been a great time to put some history out there. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the black contribution to this country, which has been totally covered up by the white race. These people are hidden figures that, for whatever purpose, the white race have chosen to keep undercover. Don't know why, don't understand why, people. These are called hidden figures. There was a movie just out last year. How many people saw Hidden Figures? One person, great. Hidden Figures is based on a book called The American Dream. It's the untold story of black mathematicians who helped put John Glenn, our first orbital astronaut in space in Earth orbit in nineteen sixty-two. I was twelve years old at the time. The movie and the book was based and focused around three exceptional, intelligent, and gifted black women, Katherine Johnson, Dorothy Vaughn, and Mary Jackson. These three women were human computers. Before I saw the movie, I didn't even know this type, this type of person existed. These people existed before electronic computers were even perfected or tested, back when the computer system took up huge rooms that had to be cooled with forced cold air to keep them from overheating. These women calculated complex formulas and predicted the amount of speed it would take to put John Glenn and his Mercury capsule into Earth orbit. They also calculated the thrust it would take to slow him back down and the trajectory to bring the first orbital astronaut back to Earth safely. And I think all of us, even if you don't remember, you know John Glenn didn't make it back and later became a congressman. Despite the fact that these three women made a huge contribution to the space program, they worked in a segregated environment, they were paid far less money than their white counterparts, and received no credit for what they did until President Obama gave Katherine Johnson, the last living member of the trio, the Presidential Freedom Award of twenty, back in twenty fifteen. Here is the fictitious women that appeared on the poster. I don't believe we're at ten seconds. Is that something off? Because I timed this at home. Read that on the screen? Now, this, these are the real women. Here's Mary Jackson. Here's Dorothy Vaughn. And Katherine Johnson. Got a few other pictures here. Here is Friendship Seven being blasted off into outer space, and boy, I don't have a pointer, but right here, there is the capsule that took John Glenn. Tiny thing, tiny thing on top of Isaac. What was the name of the rocket that took him into orbit?
I could believe that was...
Well...
No, no, this was the Mercury program. Apollo was one, it was Redstone. You're a little young for this. There's a picture of it. I've been to the Space Center, things tiny. This man had to have an amazing amount of courage to climb in that thing. It looked exactly what it was, a science project. And here's John Glenn on Friendship Seven.
We appreciate this history.
And here is Obama giving Dorothy her award.
There you go. Thank you very much. That is very informational. We did enjoy that.
Well, I'm glad you enjoyed it. I've got other stuff. Hey, can I say one thing real quick?
Thank you very much.
Last week, when that attorney was talking about the opioid epidemic, his, he forgot to tell you that ninety percent of the people dying from opioids are using straight drugs, not prescriptions.
There you go.
I'm sorry, what?
You're, she's ready to go.
Yeah, I'm going.
Okay.
Goodbye.
Ma'am?
Hi, good evening, and I have the magazine to show.
Would you state your name for the record? I just destroyed it.
Yes, good evening. My name is Janet Ribier, and I'm very happy to be here with you. I want to thanks to all the authorities, and it's one more year to do Fiesta CNLV. We start to do it when the city becomes seventy years old, and yeah, nineteen, twenty-sixteen. So now we do this, the third annual event, and I'm very happy. And the only request, my request is, yes, to this year, we want to dedicate to anti-bullying or no bullying and, and no violence in this school, so we want to request a proclamation for this Fiesta CNLV. So we want to declare the no bullying for all our kids. And, you know, Fiesta CNLV is participation, they already confirm all the different groups from the city, and I'm very happy this, I just did an interview with somebody, English speaker, they was watching our TV show, so that make me very happy, not only Hispanic, because it's Fiesta CNLV is diversity. So we wanted to, for all the people in Southern Nevada.
Thank you. Appreciate you. That's a wonderful event you put on.
Okay, thank you. My pleasure. And, and also, I want to thank you to put our Hispanic month, and you're, I saw it and, and you're informed that you did it back in January.
For the city mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, a lot of her stuff was in our, and then she wanted to, to thank us for that.
Thank you. Thank you, and we look forward to see you this, this be Sunday, April twenty-nine. We want to start it at eleven o'clock, and our ceremony opening is be at noon.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Chris Scherzinger? Chris, we just said your name for the record.
I'm just so used to it being butchered. Scherzinger, Chris Scherzinger. I'm here on behalf of Key Realty. My broker's Teddy Federowitz, he owns the real estate school as well as the brokerage as well. He asked that, basically, I'm looking to do commercial real estate, so he asked that I visit the building, zoning, and permits departments, as well as all the city councils. So I've already been to Henderson, Clark County, Board of Clark County Commissioners, Planning Card, all these things. So basically, I'll visit all of them, and then I just ask if I could get a signature. It just says that I've basically been here. It, it allows me to understand the process, basically, by going through all these things of what's required, how I'm going to help clients, and then the overall purpose is, of course, to bring business, you know?
So just one of the city councilmen can sign up for you?
Yeah.
Okay, whoever you catch, all right?
Excellent.
We saw you. Thank you very much. Mr. Elliott?
My name is Josh Elliott, and I reside at ten thousand five fifty Alexander Road. I'm somewhat nervous as I come up here, and I see the same thing they saw in Parkview, Plainview, where we saw all the signs of this type of behavior here. We saw that there, and they let it go, and let it go, and let it go until it spiraled into a situation. And before I got a chance to speak, it's the first time coming here, second time coming here to speak, and I'm somewhat frightened because I don't know what's going on with this. And I hope you can read between the lines, I don't want to be just over it as I speak. But I come here to speak about, the last time I was here in this particular chamber, your father was here, Mr. Goins, and the issue was, we wanted to look at the possibility of changing Highland in honor of Martin Luther King, what this guy spoke on a minute ago. And the end result being, I ended up giving Mayor Seestran and the members of the council beautiful plaques for being the first city in the state of Nevada to recognize Martin Luther King with a major holiday, with a major thoroughfare, and I was very, very pleased to do that. And, but what's taking place right now, I just wanted to bring to your attention, which might maybe feasible, not feasible, but what we're looking at, we got Project Neon coming out of the city, and we have a desire on the part of all the municipalities to maintain some type of continuity with these streets. So we have Martin Luther King, which is the beautifulst Martin Luther King in the whole country, and which millions of dollars of money has been donated into infrastructure. So we have a big, beautiful project coming up with Project Neon, but we have the opportunity to blend it into what took place with North Las Vegas. And I want to go on record as saying, if it wasn't for the efforts that North Las Vegas did to initiate Martin Luther King Boulevard, we would not be able to get it to, I would not have been able to get it into the city with this. And by we're doing it first here in North Las Vegas, we got, we got it into the city. And all across the country, Martin Luther King Boulevards have been places where we had situations going on. Here in Las Vegas, we've got beautiful growth and development. But what I'm coming here to ask you for is the possibility of taking it past Camino Del Norte, because we need the continuity there. It's not with a small chunk, and I notice as I look down Camino Del Norte, a fifty percent of it is, is, is what is called fences going down the street, another large percentage is a park, and so I don't know if it would be a tremendous task to take and extend, because when I, when I came before the city council to initially get this in, it was stated that we would go from Craig Road, from Cheyenne to Craig Road North as far as it'd go, but at that particular time in nineteen eighty-five, as you all know, Craig Road wasn't, it wasn't no street going through there. So would you consider taking it all the way through as far north as it can, as it can go, as it was initially stipulated in the original, when it was entered before the city, you said, presented before this body going back in eighty-five? And I'm just asking here, would you consider taking it as far as it'd go, and this is where I'm going to deal with it, but take as far as you can?
I don't know the answer. There's development agreements and homeowners associations. I understand what you're saying. I talked to Wendell Williams about that one time, but maybe we could look into that with Ms. Gainsborough or something. Okay, so we just heard you. If you want to wait over there, somebody could come over and visit with you. Would that be okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Albert, Jeff Albert?
Jeff Albert, three eight two eight Fusilliard Drive, North Las Vegas, eight nine zero three two. Going to try to cover five or six topics in these three minutes I'm allotted. Since our last meeting, last city council meeting, I've given two talks, public talks about Kyle Ranch, one at the Friends of the Meeting Monthly Meeting at the State Museum at Springs Preserve, and then last weekend at a Sons of the American Revolution Meeting in Henderson at a nice fancy Italian restaurant. Just trying to give some publicity to North Las Vegas's little hidden gem that not many people know about. Next, I wanted to publicly announce that I plan on writing a book, or possibly two, on the history of North Las Vegas, leaning towards self-publishing so I can control content. I'd like to cover the early days of our city when we were known for a good twenty years or more as Vegas Verde, going through then all the fifteen mayor terms, the mayors that served our city and what happened under their leadership. I would also definitely plan to cover the entire history of Kyle Ranch. If it's appropriate to do one book, I will. If I need to break it up into two books, hopefully I can do that, and it would hopefully be done within the next year, year and a half. Next, I just want to encourage, if the city in any way has any opportunity to pick a name for a public park or a school coming to our city, I would encourage the consideration of our only, our only, our earliest female mayor, Dorothy Porter. She was mayor in the nineteen fifties. Very interesting story on how she became mayor. At the time, there was a lot of corruption going on, four council people and a mayor. The three male council members were forced to resign, public pressure. The mayor finally gave in and resigned. Dorothy Porter was the mayor pro tem. Being the only ones left, she was nominated from the new councilman as mayor, and she became mayor for just under a year. So significant person. She was in the Zickfield Fowleys, very colorful person, and I'll eventually do a presentation at city council about her in the future. Next, I would like to encourage all our council people, our elected officials and city staff, if you ever have an opportunity to partake in purchases for an event, food, whatever, I would encourage all of you to consider patronizing North Las Vegas small business owners, as Mr. Black would agree with me. So if you're going to sponsor an event, do food, try to pick a restaurant in North Las Vegas. Next, wanted to mention that, I was a little surprised at the last council meeting, one of the agenda items was about canceling one of our two council meetings in July of this year and another one in November. I was a little surprised that there was no discussion by the council on it, there was no alternative suggested about picking another date, it just went right to a quick vote. So I was hoping to hear some discussion about that. And finally, just wanted to mention that last night, we had a very successful CAC meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Interviewers, I'd like to address the council. This is time to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. This meeting is adjourned.